And good evening. Today is July the 16th. Right now it is 7:36 and I'm calling to order this evening's meeting of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. For the benefit of those who have not participated in a planning and zoning commission meeting, our procedures are as follows. The secretary will read the legal notice of the meeting as published in local newspapers. The applicant will be invited to come forward and present the case explaining to the commission and the others present what is being requested of this property. Comments of town agencies will be read for each application if there are any. First, there'll be clarifying questions from the commissioners and then there'll be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Next, we will ask those who want to support the application to come forward. Second, we will ask those opposing the application to come forward. As this is a public meeting, it must be recorded, it will be necessary for speakers to identify themselves by stating their name and address before addressing the commission. The applicant will then be free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and the regular meeting during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of the commission and has a right to appeal to superior court with desired decisions. So this meeting will be available the day after the meeting by calling the planning and zoning office at (203) 453-8039 after 9:00 a.m. Seated tonight are the following members of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. We have Walter Corvier, I'm Rich Meyer, we have Josh Hirschman, we have Ray Bauer, Frank DeAndrea, Richard Wallace. Staff here tonight is Reggie Reed, George Crowell, Katie Arbuckle, and Kevin McGee. He's joining us, how nice to see you. Filming us tonight is Shannon Gale. Secretary, please read the legal notice.
Legal notice. Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on July 16, 2014, at 7:30 p.m. at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center Menunketuck Room, second floor, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, for the following purposes. One, Earls, William &amp; Gloria, 40 State Street, map 39, lot 54, zone R1. Special permit for addition on lot under 10,000 square feet, section 273-15G. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the office of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard and written communications will be received. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 14th day of May, 2014. Richard Meyer, Chairman.
Wonderful, thank you, appreciate that. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? No?
Do we need an approval of the revised agenda first?
After the public hearing items.
Right.
After the public hearing, I'm sorry.
All right, so we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the public hearing is open and Will?
Good evening. My name is Will Thompson, an architect. I live here in Guilford, 28 South Fair Street is my address. I'm here for Bill and Gloria Earls, the 40 State Street and residents of that house. We're here because this property is less than 10,000 square feet and we'd like to make some updates to it. I should also mention this property is in the historic district and this application has already been reviewed by the historic district commissioner and approved without any comment. The location of the property is on State Street, almost opposite Market Place. The actual lot is 8,086 square feet. It's a fairly compact stone house and in essence what we want to do is create some dormer space on the second floor and a little bit of rear deck area, basically to accommodate better living arrangements. Currently on the second floor of this house with a very low eaves, built in the middle of last century, there's almost no use of the space and so we're trying to make the second floor to hold out bedrooms, full bedrooms with closets and a workroom back. To locate things, here's Market Street, Market Place, State Street, property. Existing footprint of the house has not changed. This is the parking garage. Currently, as it stands, the coverage is over but there's no change in coverage and all of the proposed additions are set back for later. As far as a little bit of detail, I did a montage here if you look and I actually shared this color image a little better than when I sent you originally. The lower image is the house that exists. The upper image shows the dormer. The condition on this sheet, these three views are really what you see from the public way. The rear of the property is actually totally fenced in so you actually don't see very much of the rear. But this is the street side view. Everything sprung to the existing stone gables so on the street we have a more kind of compact dormer. You can see it in these views here. And to the backside backyard, we have a slightly larger dormer. And then there's an existing mudroom which has a projecting balcony on it. All those projections are less than three feet so it's the one. As far as floor plans. Currently on the second floor, you really only have this usable space. The proposed plan, they really have now two bedrooms and some closets. And that's that deck above is existing. We're also proposing an on-grade, basically just a plin plug deck that's less than two feet above grade in the rear and as I'm sure you wear, coverage and floor area don't count on that but I want to show it to you because in fact the lot's undersized. Those are the primary issues and goals. Good questions?
How far, how much of it undersized?
As far as the lots size?
As far as the lot size.
Well, right now, the lot is 8,086 square feet versus the 10,000 square foot would be of R1. Just how?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. As far as, as far as floor area, we're allowed 30 percent. We're at 27 and a half so we're good on floor area with us opposed. Existing coverage, and it's really because the garage, is at 20.6 but that's unchanged as far as percent. Are those your questions?
And your inflexible surfaces, of course, is identical to the setting.
Correct. And the other thing we're really careful about, I mean obviously the historic district, it helps drive that much more, is allowing the stone building to still kind of read, you know, its primary elements. Everything is sprung from those stone gables and sort of subservient to it. And the slightly more informal part is in the rear where really only Earls can see it, which is that deck there. And in fact, the perspectives, if you look at, these were, these are, you know, photos and that deck does not show. And there's that rear deck, you don't see it from the street, you have to get into the driveway to see it.
Just for our education before we move to the other questions, would you describe for us very briefly the kinds of specifications that you tried to follow for the historic district and any that the historic district commission might have put forward to you?
Well, we are upgrading windows on the house. Right now it's steel sash which is fairly inefficient in the paint but we worked up a detail in a clad wood sash that has very similar sightline to current steel sash. So that whole review process went on. In fact, there's a transom line that carries around it and is replicated in the new window package. The hallway that dormer is cut in, there's a low slope pan there so it keeps the dormer very subtle even though the window size is workable. But we've kept the eve of that street side dormer quite low. In other words, it's really more, that area near the street is more a sitting area just so it doesn't take over the scale of the house. We're also trying to increase the energy efficiency of the building and with that investment it's sort of like, okay, well let's make the space workable otherwise it's not worth it. In other words, they're going to upgrade the heating if you want it to. That's for some of them. And in material palette, we went through all the parts of the structure.
Was that extensive? Did that take more than a month?
With them? No, we did, I think we did an initial meeting. We did a preliminary meeting and then we did our formal application and they approved. But often a preliminary meeting is a good time to talk about the scale. We ended up tweaking the pitch of one of the dormers a little bit, made it tiny a little more steep.
All set? I'm all set. Good, good. Questions? We have a letter from somebody? Dennis Johnson, I have it. Someone want to read it?
The applicant opposed second floor building on its premises to not impact upon existing site.
Just a few bedrooms now and some of those actual upstairs that are not very good enough.
Any other questions? Nice chance. Okay, so now we're going to ask those who want to support the application to come forward. Does anyone want to support the application? Anyone opposed to the?
Questions from the public.
Questions from the public. Questions? Supporting one way or another? No. There. That's it? Nothing else? All right, so then can I get a motion to close the public meeting?
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Wonderful. All right, so regular meeting. Walter, you have something to change on the agenda?
Oh, no, I was confused about the subdivisions.
But we're okay the way we are?
But that's, we have, no, I'm all set with this thing.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve the revised agenda?
So moved.
Second. Wonderful, thank you Frank. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, so that carries. All right, so let's deliberate about the Earls home. I don't see anything wrong here. Ray?
Hi, do you want to get a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Sure. And we can discuss it.
Yep, yep.
I voted that Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission receive a special permit for additional floor area on a lot less than 10,000 square feet for William &amp; Gloria Earls, 40 State Street, map 39, lot 54, as shown on Earls Residence renovation, four sheets prepared by William Thompson, AIA, dated 6/23/14. This application is approved with the following conditions, that prior to issuing of a building permit, a permit from the historic, well, I guess it was already granted but we'll leave the condition in, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, a permit from the historic district commission be obtained. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code. The special permit is effective on July 25, 2014 upon filing with the town president.
Second. All right, so Ray, for the discussion, what do you got?
Well, I don't think they're changing really any of the variance, setbacks, the only?
There's one, though, that sheet has a slight update of that rear deck. As far as your dates of plans, you might want to.
But with regard to the regulations, it doesn't look like anything's really changing except for the total floor area and the outside appearance of the building, which I think the historic district commission has already weighed in upon. So having heard that plus the fact that there hasn't been any opposition to it, then I'm in favor of granting this application.
Right, and they're doing energy efficiency work so it's going to be good for the environment what they're doing. And it looks great, I mean the pictures look wonderful. Nice job with the pictures, wish I could do that. So what else? Anyone have anything else? All right.
Do you have a revised date on that map? Is it 7/1?
Yeah. We just asked the applicant very briefly about the.
I can give you a complete set of that version.
You have to amend it.
I'll amend my original.
Basically, just these two sheets, we developed that a little bit more right there so I didn't want, that would be a great. Given that I discussed a permit, you know, I thought your plans were preliminary but I wanted to go with the most current version.
Is the motion in the proper form?
Yeah.
All right, I'm all set.
All set? All set? All right, so all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions done. Good for you. Enjoy your new home.
Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you. Good for you. All right, subdivision, we have nothing on here? Site plan DDR. Oh, man. Do you have something to offer us?
For the record, I'm John Up, I'm returning with the office at 147 Broad Street in Milford. And I'm here tonight on the call, DDR Guilford LLC, which is owner of the subject, car sale located in 1913 Boston Post Road. This is a site plan application to modify our 2008 site plan approval. We're very excited to be here tonight. This is the last hurdle that we need to overcome to recommence construction activities at the sites. I don't think it's a secret that our goal is to get back in the ground late this summer or early fall and backseat open fall of 2013. So we think the modifications from the 2008 approval are relatively minor. We've been to DRC three times now. We've got, on those three visits, we've gotten two approvals, most recently a week ago. We have agreed with DRC that we would come back to them after we complete this process to work out some of the more minor details such as the color of the pavements, the type of fence and those sorts of things. And we're happy to go back and continue that dialogue. Just note parenthetically that our dialogue with DRC was very, very productive, it's very candid, it gave us a lot of good constructive criticism that we took to heart and made modifications based upon that, both in terms of landscaping and site design and building design. And we all think that the project is better for their input and we're appreciative of that. As I said last week, virtually everything has remained the same from our 2008 approvals with two exceptions. One is the breakup of the one long building and two is the slight reduction in square footage from 149 to 500 square feet to 139, 140. Other than that, uses are the same, it's all retail with exception of one restaurant. The development envelope is identical to what was originally approved. Stormwater, drainage, access and traffic are all the same. And so while I think the purpose of tonight is to look forward, I do want to submit for the record, the approvals that we did receive in the past, and I think it's important because all these approvals still apply and all the conditions of those approvals still apply. And so I just want to let you know what it is that I'm introducing to the record and then we can proceed. The first is the state, the Menunket Department of Environmental Protection, which is now DEEP, of course. Office of adjudications, which is our approval on the wastewater treatment class. That is dated August 21, 2007. There was the final decision from DEEP dated September 10, 2007. We have our inland wetland approval from December 27, 2007 with a number of conditions all of which we are continuing to comply with. There is our site plan approval from January 11, 2008. Some of those conditions are no longer applicable and we can discuss that in more detail in minutes just because of, some of them are satisfied, some are no longer applicable. We have the wastewater treatment system agreement with the Guilford Water Pollution Control Authority we must still adhere to. There was a conservation easement that we granted along the Spinning Mill Brook that's already been recorded on the land records, I'll submit a copy of that. We have from October 16, 2012, the extension on our inland wetland approval until the year 2021. And the last item is from October 17, 2012, which is our extension on our site plan approval and that is good until the year 2022. So I'll submit all those to the record.
Thank you.
In addition to working with DRC, your time staff has also reviewed our application and just a couple of quick notes. First, Kevin was kind enough to offer his report and I would just note that he concludes that the site modifications do not increase the stormwater runoff from the December 12, 2007 inland wetland commission approval. In addition, all the proposed modifications are outside of the wetlands commission's regulated area. He also notes that the plants of the project have segmentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with your regulations. And I would note that we are required to get certification of our ENS plan. So in addition to our site plan approval application, we also are requesting ENS certification. There's a memo from Jim Porkway that is directed specifically to traffic issues. He says, "Review static net and traffic data for I-95, exit 57, traffic movement data as well as information on the post road and intersection of Plankmont Road indicate that 2013 traffic has not increased since 2008 when the Connecticut State Traffic Commission approved the original development plan." So we already have our, what was the state traffic commission approval, now is the office's state traffic administration approval certificate and that certificate has been extended until the year 2015. Dennis Johnson, who is your director of health, has complained that our site plan revision will not impact on the design or function of the on-site wastewater system previously approved by DEEP. So we appreciate both the DRC's inputs, Kevin's, Jim's and Dex's inputs. I think all this goes to indicate that what we've indicated from two weeks ago as well tonight, that for the most part, this plan is identical to what was approved in 2008 with the exception of the layout of the buildings and the design of those buildings. And to speak more specifically about that, I want to introduce Frank Camion, who's going to take you through the architectural changes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We met two weeks ago briefly, we did a quick overview, go through one a little bit longer this evening and feel free to stop me at any point. We have met, as Dennis said, two times with DRC. First time we came away with a few bruises. Second time was a little bit more of an old fashioned charrette with trace paper and had a lot of constructive criticism, all of which the developer, DDR, was willing to accommodate. And we went back a third time and presented and I think for all intents and purposes passed with fine colors. We, I may have mentioned two weeks ago and what we've discussed with DRC is that we are by no means trying to emulate the green or the architecture, but we do want the filter but we do want to be inspired by it and use it as our springboard. Obviously, the scale of our buildings is larger than those around the green. However, it is perfect type of architecture to implement a custom designed retail center as opposed to prototype big boxes, which a lot of our tenants would prefer. And DDR is indeed implementing a design standard for all the tenants to comply with. So for lack of a better term, no big blue wedge is going to be permitted here. To go, to start with, the building architecture and colors and materials, you can see, we start with muted tones and clap, semitish clapboard which emulates a lot of the architecture that you have in town. You do not have, from what we've experienced, you don't have garage colors, you don't have the Sherwin-Williams quote-unquote New England collection. It isn't the bright yellows, the bright blues with the white trim board. If you do have those colors, they tend to be toned down. And so we use that as our starting point. There was one comment of possibly even doing the whole center in bright white but we didn't see a lot of that here in town. So we've stuck with the muted tones all the way across and then what we do is we get accents of feature colors that will happen in banding and then more particular when you get down to the pedestrian scale. It'll be finite, so we're playing with a balance of the commercial scale, what one sees from the cars they drive up and their vehicles and then as they walk the promenade across the front. One of the questions that came up very early on with DRC was not to have the three junior box tenants all look the same, flat tops and so forth. And it was determined, and referring to here, we'll call it Project East, the three junior box tenants and that one act is sort of, I'll call it the matriarch in the center and then the two on either side act as bookends or arms stretched out towards you. So the architecture of the center tenant, which we cannot name names yet at this point but we have been working vigorously with this particular tenant, has bought into the concept of the style and the architecture that you see here, including exterior trellises, hardscape, landscape, some outdoor seating. That's sort of the feature in the middle and DRC even requested the cupola at the top. The tenants on either side will balance accordingly. There was a request from DRC to also mix up the masonry materials so that it's not all CMU, it's not all brick, it's not all stone. So each tenant will have a play on that as well, which is depicted slightly better in the overall elevation of the center. So you'll see we've got a mix of CMU, brick and stone across the front. The trellis, as I mentioned before. All of the inline retail buildings as well as the junior box buildings will have pedestrians get light poles that will, you know, march down the promenade with you as well. And then the feature between, there's a feature between the two junior boxes that's on access. This was another item we briefly discussed with you two weeks ago that was requested of DRC, which was to make a safe pedestrian environment across the parking lot. One of the items that Chris will discuss is how the plan has changed from years ago until today. But previously, this building was a little smaller, came closer and then it was all filled in, carrying between, because of the tenants that DDR is working with currently, we need to fill the parking in front. And so we've created this raised pedestrian walkway, sidewalk, landscaping benches and the light poles will occur through there as well. So both day and night, we have a nice hardscape crosswalk and then a safe passage between the two. The request from DRC was that we have a visual vista at the end of this long promenade as you head Project East and so that will be here. Underneath that location and this pocket park location here as well, which will be submitted under a separate application, are two signs that we, or that the developer has promised the city of Guilford will be used for marketing, I guess, retailers and the like that is actually downtown. So that will occur in two locations as well. We also have our landscape architect that will discuss all the different varieties of animated landscaping that will occur, color, seasonal, et cetera. The building materials will be, as I mentioned, stone, brick, CMU, clapboard, dryad, trim board, semitish trim board. The inline retail buildings will be four sided. We will be screening the rooftop units from the four sided parapets full height on these two buildings. There was actually a request that the junior box buildings not be continuous on one height in the rear so that will actually slope to gutter in the back but has pop-ups in key locations. Signage was discussed at length with DRC and it was determined that they would prefer rather than multiple signage on the back of the junior box building, that it occur in one location only on a tower element. And then you can see the pop-ups that we have. So we accommodated their request as well in that regard. And so the tenants will have it in one location, which is back here, visible from I-95, is that one behind me? So that is that corner there as well. Another comment that came up was to replace some of the chain link fence that is there with some decorative fencing and that was submitted to DRC. I guess the electronic was sent to DRC as well. So in choice locations, the chain link will be mixed up with the decorative black PVC railing described as a picket with round circles on the top. As I mentioned, the inline buildings will be four sided in architecture. We're starting to work with one of the end cap tenants currently on the end in the longer building and then these do have full height parapets on the back and tenant signage on the back. This building you will see as you come up the drive aisle. And so we feel it's important that the back of that be treated with articulation as well as tenant signage in cases anywhere. I'll just take you around the back. I think that's what I've got, architecturally unless you have any questions specific.
The fencing, you happen to have?
the back. This building you will see as you come up the drive aisle. And so we feel it's important that the back of that be treated with articulation as well as tenant signage that faces anywhere. Just to take you around the back. I think that's what I've got, architecturally, unless you have any questions specific.
The fencing, you happen to have close above that the fencing you referred to, the decorative interest first?
I did. I have a... That was one of the items that we had agreed to come back to, to DRC with. As Frankie said, there was a chain leak in portions that, I mean, it's well-maintained, but it's not particularly attractive, and so we're submitting some choice to DRC. You know, as I said, we will be continuing our dialogue with them on some of the site details, including that fence.
And that faces the exit, the exit ramp, what we're talking about, that's the only... How far does, how far does the interspersed decorative fencing and/or the chain link extend around to the west side of the property facing the...
I don't want to speak before you, Chris, but I believe you're putting it in locations that are visible from the parking area.
Hello, everyone. For the record, I'm Chris Gagnon, a civil engineer with BL Companies. At the request of DRC, in areas where the fence could be visible to the public coming up and down Route 1, they've suggested that we use a little more attractive fence than the chain link fence. I'm sure most of us drive by here a lot, I have a living in Guilford. This area is fully vegetated, full height, trees, you can't see anything going on behind here. So we're going to keep this as the chain link fencing, and then areas here where you can see it, and then as it comes around the corner here where you can see it, we're going to be doing a more decorative fencing. So it's really a common sense layout in terms of where the decorative fencing should go.
And does the height of the current Guilford Sporting Goods building matter at all to that? That's too, that's too low on the south end of the... That has no impact.
Okay, but I'm sure it's...
I only see it from...
But today, this picture is in winter and a couple of years old, the vegetation is up above right around the fence height right now. We're still, you know, it's not a little bit vegetation and zoom out and things like that, so we're still proposing the decorative fencing in that area. This is a very steep slope. It's not going to ever be mowed or bushwhacked or anything like that, so the vegetation is going to, is going to take over. So this bough is a little misleading in that it seems like you can see the whole side, but if you drive by now, it's pretty well vegetated.
And just, you know, that fence sits on top of the chain links, are being constructed, so there's a safety of the fence.
And then on the parking lot side of the fence, we're proposing what's commonly known as the Merritt Parkway guy rail. There's the, the wood rail is going along the parking lot side of the fence, so that when you're inside the lot, even where there's chain link fence, that's going to fade away into the landscape, and you'll be seeing the wood rail protected by the guy rail.
Frankie had mentioned signage on a number of occasions, and I just wanted to, you know, make the commission aware of what we're doing in that regard. And what we're doing is following the same process that we did last time. In 2008, we submitted a site plan application. Once we got approved, then we worked with DRC on the new signage ordinance that they're happy with. And just because of the change in tenants, we're going to be doing that again. So at some point in the near future, once we get beyond this application, we'll be coming, we'll be working with DRC to come up with a new set of signage regulations that will apply to the shopping center west zone, and then submitting a formal application to this commission with our full signage package after we get the blessing from DRC.
We still have letters to read with...
We do. Dominic Soltura is our landscape architect. He's going to bring you up to date on the wider changes on landscaping, give you some details on the hardscape, all of which I think you'll like quite a bit.
Thank you, Sid Andro. Dominic Soltura, BL Companies, 150 Trumpo Street, Hartford, Connecticut, for the record. I'm going to talk a little bit about the site. You guys got a look at the aesthetics for the building. I'm going to try to take you quickly through the feel of the actual site. Like we said, this is an approved project once already. The feel, the extensiveness, the appropriateness, and the contact-sensitive landscaping that was proven in the first design has been continued here. We did go through during design review. I want to touch on two of their elements right away. One was a comment about the use of one of our trees inside the parking lots. We agree with the comment. We're going to, we're going to discontinue the use of that tree. We're going to incorporate two of the other trees that were, that are already on the list into that parking area, but we did get a consensus from DRC that we can still use the whips or smaller type trees in some of the wetland buffer planting areas, and they agreed with that as well. They did ask for some trees on the south side of the site. Unfortunately, there's a lot of utility type area in there, trees can't be facilitated in that area. We told them we have a lot more MBL entries in other areas to accept that. As Eric stated earlier, we brought in a facility eight to a promenade, about eight feet wide. It bisects the site. It basically gives you holistic retail shopping experience. What we want the feel to be is more of the human scale outside of the buildings. We want to be able to park, and you want to be able to walk as much as possible. Do we all do that? Absolutely not. But if the option is there, it's universally accessible. Obviously, university accessible means not just wheelchairs, we're talking about walkers, we're talking about people with other disabilities, but also the stroller that could be used, or maybe even the carriages that have to interact, if there's carriages on the site as well. In terms of that, of that access that we're developing, at one end, there's going to be a vest pocket park area, so there'll be a small gathering area where we can have some interaction socially within the site. It bisects the site, so you've got a nodal area at the other end. We talked about that wayfinding signage, and so that's what it actually is, it's wayfinding signage for the town of Guilford. It's going to connect this to the town green and the businesses that are down in that area as well. So there's kind of a give and take within that area. But in the feel along this area, what we're doing is we're tying the architecture, and we're going to blend it out into the landscape. And the plant material, we're going to blend it out. We want four-season, as much as possible, four-season interest. Visual interest, and in many senses, as we can invoke in that, within that area. Also, the ground plane is something we can play with a little bit. We're looking for sustainable, durable type elements on those ground planes. Not, not too busy, but we want it to play off the architecture. So we did submit to DRC some samples, and we're working with them on touching on the rhythm of the buildings, also trying to define entrance ways so we can draw attention to entrances, but also the experience of the walk itself. We want it to be a visually nice experience. I'm going to move this over for a second, and I want to get the attention spread to this. We're going with two different light fixtures, a smaller pedestrian scale light fixture along that promenade, so to speak, and then we're going to do an ornamental light fixture out in the parking lots, a little bit higher, a little bit more, more secure for when it times its illumination. There'll be benches involved, planters, trash receptacles and the like. We're working hand in hand with them to make sure that it's a definition. We're not going to bring Newport Road Island in here. We want it to be something that can tie into the character of the Guilford area, just like we did with the architecture as well. I think that's, that's the quickest, the quickest answer. Let's go.
I'll just ask you questions.
Any questions for...
Hi, you are, sorry. Just about the, the safety of, I usually call it a hardscape, I usually call it a parking lot. Behind the juniors especially, and also to the north, to the northwest and the gap between the two retail. Just in terms of personal safety in the parking lot. Our big Y is a much more open, is a much more open layout, and back when it was, the previous tenants, back when it was Bradley and a couple of other things, we had some problems in that parking lot. This one is a little bit more remote from the center of town. I know that in general, safety arrangements have improved, but is there any specific design feature that supplies greater safety, particularly in those areas, but in the other area that you may...
Obviously, whenever we invoke a design, we want to go for safety, security, and obviously aesthetics, because we want to make sure it's a comfortable area as well. In terms of the plantings that are involved in the building massing, this building massing actually works better because it gives us something which is called conceal and reveal, but it also gives us opportunity gaps so that there's not a lot of chance for an area where someone can jump out in front of you or, or come and have some sort of gathering area where no one can see. In terms of the circulation through the site, the circulation is wide open in terms of if a cruiser has to come through here, okay, at night or something, there's not a lot of areas that you can't actually get to. So you see a lot of times, sometimes older schools where there's a big or massive areas where you can't actually look out and see or have, have what we call a pole in, where you can actually observe what's going on. What we do with the landscaping in all site elements is you try to make them open, but the conceal is, is the tree canopy itself. So for the first year or so, it might not be as a full canopy. It'll blend in, but you want approximately seven feet, six, seven feet down low, so the plantings will be low, you can't hide behind them, things like that. Trash receptacles are usually oriented a lot, people like to slide next to buildings. We like to put them out a little, a little further, so there's, there's no area for things to be hidden, for people to be hidden, things along those lines. You do draw attention to the south and to the north areas, which are most likely the employee parking for those areas. Maybe not this area, but this, you know, behind the building where you've got loading and things like that, employee parking, which is a little bit different than the regular customer parking. In the customer parking zone, obviously, the layout and orientation of parking closets are all done for vehicular versus pedestrian safety, which is a different level of safety. Security, I don't know, I want to speak to it because that's not part of what I do, but I mean, there are probably security parameters as well.
My, I guess my biggest concern is actually the easement parking lot that falls, that falls off immediately to the right edge of the, the map above the, what I keep calling, of course, the Guilford Sporting Goods building, but it's the Russo Building Park. As you pull around that loop and go down, that is, that's graded significantly lower than the rest of the area. It has minimal purpose except for, except for employee overflow parking for that, for that building, and it doesn't have...
Yeah, this is Chris Gagnon. The, that parking area is still in use today. The gate down here is open, and there's an access road that comes around that is still in use today. We prepared a full photometric plan, including the building light fixtures and the site light fixtures. So once this is constructed, the safety of folks using that lot will actually improve. If you go in today and you're, you're right here, it's going to be totally dark. If you go in after we construct all this, right here is going to be illuminated per regulations. Our photometric plan depicts that as well. So I believe, in my humble opinion, that the safety for the folk using this lot will improve greatly once we construct this site.
And certainly, that was the condition when Russo's owned our parcel as well. They're using the exact same access as we do this one. You know, I noted that this is a site plan application, it's not a special permit. We don't trigger any of the thresholds that require a special permit. And site plan, of course, is the lowest threshold of approval, is the ministerial act by the commission. That being said, you know, back in 2008, I referred to this project as the most scrutinized project in the state of Connecticut at the time, certainly of any project, but certainly by virtue of the ratio of the square footage or acreage, because between the DEP and your Wetland Commission and all the experts that your Wetland Commission hired and we paid for, and the opposition hired, and our own third-party reviewers that we paid for, I think there were literally over a dozen reviewers who had scrutinized every aspect of this application. All those protections are still in place. So while we're focusing on some architectural and hardscape changes, you know, want to reassure the commission and any members of the public that all those precautions that were instituted in 2007 and 2008 are still in place, with the exceptions I noted with some of the conditions of the planning zoning, site plan approval, which are just no longer applicable. The other thing I would note is that your site plan regs require that we be consistent with the plan of conservation development. The commission determined in 2008 that we were, but I would just point out for the record, section 2.8 calls out, 2.6 of your plan of conservation development calls out a number of different criteria, all of which we comply with. So I know there's some months to be read, and we'd be happy to respond to this.
Thank you. Frank?
Start.
Please.
All right, this is from Jim Porquet, our town engineer. It's dated 7/16/2014. The revised site plan and attendant reports have been reviewed and found significantly consistent in the scope and detail with the previously approved development plan. No additional engineering issues need to be considered with this new application. A resident has contacted me concerned about traffic issues and the potential that the new data may cause reconsideration of impacts. A review of the Connecticut, the state of Connecticut traffic data for I-95, exit 57, traffic movement data, as well, as well as information on the post road at the intersection with Flagmarsh Road, indicate that the 2013 traffic has no increase since 2008 when the Connecticut State Traffic Commission approved the original development plan. It was worth looking at the historical information, but it's clear that the recent poor economic climate has dampened traffic flow as well as economic development. It's recommended that all conditions stipulated in the former approval of the DDR property be extended to the approval of the current application.
I'll go ahead and read this letter.
According to the law, let me add one element there, clarify. One, Jim's last recommendation says all conditions stipulated the former approval. I discussed that, the use of the word "all," and if you'll look at the next page in your packet there, following his memo, there is the letter of approval from January 11, 2008. Item number two, the prior tuition for the building permit, those conditions. The, the ones that are currently relevant, according to Jim, are the ones that are checked there, 2C, 2E, and 2F. The other conditions, several of them don't relate to his area, A and B in particular. D has already been accomplished, and G is no longer relevant. So when he used the word "all," he really meant to say 2C, 2E, and 2F. Those conditions are, should be required or reiterated as part of this approval, should you be so inclined.
All right, this is a letter from Kevin McGee to Guilford Planning and Zoning dated July 16, 2014. The applicant has completed the checklist to guide low-impact development-based best management practices and is utilizing several of the recommended practices. The parking area located on the northeast side of the property are proposed to be constructed utilizing permeable pavers. The stormwater management system consists of catch basins and roof leaders that flow into underground detention galleries that discharge to a detention pond. According to the stormwater management report dated June 20, 2014 by BL Companies, the site modification does not increase the stormwater runoff from the December 12, 2007 Inland Wetland Commission approval. In addition, all the proposed modifications are outside of inland wetland commission-regulated areas. Plans for the project have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with 273-97B subsection 6 of the zoning regulations. In addition, the engineers have provided a construction phasing plan designed to control the stormwater during the different stages of construction. Some of the erosion control measures have been installed as part of the original approval and are currently being monitored by an independent erosion control specialist who provides weekly reports to the inland wetland commission. In order to provide for long-term protection of the wetlands, I recommend the following conditions of approval to assure future compliance of the stormwater management system in accordance with 273-75F of the zoning code. Upon approval of the site plan application, but prior to the commencement of any work, the applicant shall execute an agreement and file a bond with the Planning and Zoning Commission to guarantee completion and maintenance of work required by the approved stormwater management plan. A written maintenance and operational manual for all stormwater management systems located at the subject site. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspection, maintenance of the stormwater system, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not be limited to, weekly, monthly, and quarterly inspections of the property for litter, monitoring the dumpster, and outside storage areas, sweeping the parking lot, monitoring of the catch basins, vortex, fortronic units, and underground detention retention galleries. The removal of accumulated material and non-native invasive species in the rain gardens, tree filters, water quality, swale, sediment for bay, stormwater detention ponds, and energy dissipator. The maintenance plan needs to provide a statement that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that inspection maintenance requirements may be modified and that any changes to the plan would require the approval of the town engineer. An as-built drawing of the completed stormwater system prepared in accordance with section 273-75 point F. Stormwater management subsection 6, construction. The applicant shall file a maintenance covenant on the land records as required by section 273-75F Stormwater Management Subsection 7, Maintenance Covenants of the Town of Guilford Zoning Code.
Wow.
A lot of.
Nice, that's very nice.
And there's another letter here.
Thanks, Kevin. That was great.
I have a letter from Brian McGlon.
Want to do it?
Give him my past history.
There you go.
Before you do that, you wanted to do this, I'm just assessing the actual thing. So this is from Dennis Johnson. The applicant's site plan revision will not impact upon the design or function of the onsite wastewater system previously approved by the Connecticut EEP.
Great, okay.
This is from Brian McGlon, dated Wednesday, July 16, 2014. I am not able to attend the meeting tonight due to a scheduling conflict. However, I want this letter of support for this project. Rarely a day or week goes by when I am not asked about the rock pile. Based on this interest, I believe our residents are ready for something good to happen on this valuable piece of property conveniently located off exit 57 on Route 95 and Route 1. Reviewing the basic facts, the site is zoned for a shopping center. The site was previously approved for this type of development, and the current plan is fundamentally the same, albeit slightly smaller than originally was proposed. The critical issues concerning traffic, stormwater, waste management, wetlands, and more are being addressed appropriately. The physical design and architecture will fit with Guilford's character and has been modified based on input from our design review committee. Although our decision cannot be based on whom tenants might be, we hope they will be the type to bring additional goods and services to Guilford. We hope they will attract customers who will also visit and support other businesses, museums, and attractions within our community. Short term, there will be construction employment that might utilize local talent. Longer term, other residents might benefit from job creation as well. Guilford Commons will be a significant addition to our grand list and tax base. It is anticipated that support services will not need to increase, thus the development should become a net positive to our revenue stream fairly quickly. Recognizing our new high school is coming soon, this development will help offset some of the tax impact our residents will be experiencing. Based on the above, I would like to confirm my support for Guilford Commons. Regards, Brian McGlon, Economic Development Coordinator.
Well, let's hear it for Brian. Good job, he writes a nice letter. All right, what else do we have? Anything?
Just a motion.
Are you ready?
Frank, before we do the motion, I just, I know that's probably the outside of our purview, but back in 2007 and 2008, not all of the people who may have become interested since then have worked around or involved. And I was wondering if you could just briefly go into the voluntary specifications that you put onto the Xenon system, even though, of course, that's, I know that's, under inland wetlands purview, I think it may be illuminating for some members of the public to have a short synopsis of that situation.
I will tell you.
I know staff is dying when I say that.
Yep.
I'd be happy to, this is the wetland approval itself, there are.
Also, you already have wetland approval. This is really just for the benefit of people to me.
So there were 10 findings in fact, I'll tell you how many conditions of approval there are.
The current, the voluntary restrictions that you put on the effluent nitrogen level.
Do you want me to go off the number?
I'm up to 38 conditions for some of the sub parts.
I think, I think I can sort of short-circuit that. What Walter would like everybody to know, and I remember from the wetlands application process, is that you're discharging from the Xenon system a level of nitrogen that's actually lower than the background nitrogen level of spinning brook. So the addition of this effluent from the sewage treatment system will actually clean the water and make it safer than it's currently.
I'd be happy to, to go to that a little bit. First of all, we're using a gray water system, so we're reusing a lot of the water that's going to be used. So the gray water system is going to be used in toilets and urinals, and so the amount of water that's going to be used at the sites and the amount of water that's going to be coming out of the system is very, very small. The one hallmark of the project and of the Xenon system itself is the extremely conservative nature of the design of the system. In fact, there will be no breakouts from the sand filters into the wetlands. That has always been our contention from the very beginning. We have submitted substantial data to substantiate that. We submitted data that indicated, even if it didn't, if it did break out, there'd be no impact to the wetlands. But most recently, several weeks ago, DDP has to do some additional testing of our soils, and that confirmed that there will be no breakout of the effluents from the sand filters directly to wetlands, or everything will percolate into the ground. There will be no breakouts. So, I mean, that's the shortest synopsis I can give you.
Good, is that okay?
Thank you.
Great. All right, I think we're at that point after all these years.
I will just say this, having been on economic development, I think I was in almost as many hearings as Mr. Huff was over those course of years.
Well, yes, I know, I have certainly been quite a few myself, and I'm so happy to be at this point. So, who would like to have the pleasure and honor of reading this motion? Anyone?
I think Richard Wallace might.
Richard, why don't you do it? Enjoy it.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan modification for DDR Guilford, 1919 Boston Post Road, map 79, lots 34, 35, and 36, as shown on the following. Land development plans for Guilford Planning and Zoning, Guilford Commons, 49 sheets dated June 27, 2014, prepared by BL Companies. Architectural plans, Guilford Commons, five sheets dated June 25, 2014, created, prepared by Create Architecture, Planning, and Design. This application is approved with the following conditions. Prior to the approval of a building permit, detailed plans including materials, colors, and landscape details be reviewed by the Design Review Committee. Two, that prior to approval of a certificate of zoning compliance for any building, all site work will be completed, or in lieu of completion of landscaping, a bond be posted to ensure completion of landscape work. Three, the approval does not constitute approvals of any signs. Four, upon approval of site plan application, but prior to the commencement of any work, the applicant shall execute an agreement and file a bond with the Planning and Zoning Commission to guarantee completion and maintenance of the work required by the approved stormwater management plan. Five, a written maintenance and operation manual be provided for all stormwater management systems located on the subject site. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspection, maintenance of the stormwater system, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not be limited to, weekly, monthly, and quarterly inspections of the property for litter, monitoring the dumpsters, and outside storage areas, sweeping the parking lots, monitoring of the catch basins, vortex units, and underground detention retention galleries. The removal of accumulated material and non-native invasive species in the rain garden, tree filter, water quality, swale, sediment for bay, stormwater detention pond, and energy dissipator. The maintenance plan needs to provide a statement that the stormwater management plan be reviewed annually so that the inspection, maintenance requirements may be modified and that any changes to the plan would require the approval of the town engineer. Six, an as-built drawing of the completed stormwater system be prepared in accordance with section 273-75F Stormwater Management Subsection 6, Construction. The applicant shall file a maintenance covenant on the land records as required by section 273-75F Stormwater Management Subsection 7, Maintenance and Covenants of the Town of Guilford Zoning Code. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code.
Thank you. Nice, very good.
Could you add the three conditions recommended by Jim Portman to that?
Which are all, is that where we define it all as?
I'm sorry. 2C, 2E, and 2F, right? Right, from the letter of approval of 2008.
2008. We don't have to read them. Okay, so let's add that to that.
Thank you.
All right, so we have that added to it. We have motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I think Richard has to say "so amended" for those three.
So.
Okay, there we go. All right.
All right, let's do this. I reset.
Okay, we all set. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to briefly say, I think that this is a great improvement to the plan. I really hope that it happens. I know this is on your list of troubled properties, and I know that it has, up to this point, never happened. We're a small town, you know, we're sort of not true professionals in this area, and as a small town, we can't really leave ourselves. So I plan to vote yes on this because I think that this plan is a significant improvement over our last plan, and also I think that it is, I think the Xenon system is designed to be very, very appropriate for the site. And I do hope that this project goes to completion and is a success and does not overburden traffic or have a serious adverse effect on other businesses in town. But I also, I do hope that it happens, and I especially hope that it doesn't happen halfway.
Thank you.
Well, I think at the groundbreaking, you should have all the planning zoning commissioners with the shovels, I think that would be a nice touch.
I'll be there every month. I just heard something, next fall, fall of '15, that's the same time the high school opens.
Oh, this is perfect. And just a personal thing, if there is a restaurant over there, if you make it a White Castle, it'd be a great idea, so. You know, all right, all right, all right. Anything else?
You're so classy. I know, I know.
I'd like to look at the top.
We really don't have too much discretion here, anyway.
No.
We've already had a plan that was approved, so, and there's, changes have only been better, so we're, I think it's a pretty.
So let's just do this, all right? You guys ready? Fingers crossed. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, it's been a long road. Build us a shopping center. Good job. We're counting on you. Yeah, the whole audience is counting. Very nice job. Congratulations, congratulations. Make it happen. Make it so. All right, that is a good, good thing. Guilford is going to benefit greatly. Okay. Oh, staff, all of these applications are on the same day. You want to really just go with the gusto and, okay. Applications to be received. Can I get a motion to?
I'd like to break out the last one. I'm sorry. Wait, numbers one and two, something?
One.
Numbers one and two, not the subdivision.
Well, we got to start with the first one, right?
Let's do it one at a time. Walter would like to do this one at a time.
I'd like to move that we receive and set a public hearing of August 6 for Person Martha, 42 and 43 Marshall Avenue, map 10, lot.
Special program.
I'll start over. I would like to move that we receive and set a public hearing date for Guilford, A Better Chance, 143 Church Street, map 46, lot 135, Zone R1 and CSV, special permit additional lot coverage for decks in the R1 zone, section 273-37.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries. Next up.
I would like to move that we receive and set a public hearing date for Person Martha, 42 and 43 Marshall Avenue, map 10, lot 57, Zone R2, coastal area management site plan construction of single-family dwelling, section 273-91. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's have this third one. What do we got?
No, this is not the one. I would like to move that we receive and set a public hearing date for August 6, 2014, for McManus, Chris, 78 Seaside Avenue, map 29, lot 118, Zone R3, coastal area management site plan demolition and reconstruction of single-family dwelling. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Site plan, there is nothing, zoning, nothing, subdivision.
I would like to move that we receive and set a public hearing date for.
Do you want to have a public hearing on this? Is that what you're intending?
Receive and set a, I'm sorry, receive and set a meeting date for the first meeting in September rather than August 6 on this subdivision.
Okay, is that because a lot of people are out of town and they might have something to say?
Correct. This is the black hole zone, and we've already got a lot.
This is a subdivision.
That is true. But this is, sorry, this is Sullivan Farms North.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a lot of interest in this last time.
All right, so you.
And it was also in the summer.
So to accommodate the folks that are out of town, you're recommending that we delay the meeting for a two-week period?
Is there a public hearing associated with this?
No.
So then why are we delaying it since they can't offer input anyways to the commissioner of the public hearing?
They can.
A public hearing is not required, but there's no, you can hold a public hearing on anything that you want to. It's not required by our regulations to have a public hearing on a subdivision application. Once we receive a public, once we receive any application, then there's a time, there's a time clock that starts during which you have to take action. If you receive this application tonight, it'll, you can take action on it at any time within that, Frank, within that timeframe, 65 days. So there's plenty of time to nurse this along up until September if you want to. If you do want to have a public hearing, you know, you can have a public hearing should you desire to, and then you can set a date for it, as long as it's within that timeframe.
Yeah, I think I would like to receive and set a public hearing date for the first planning and zoning meeting in September. Sullivan Farms North LLC, 2945 Boston Post Road, map 83, lot 5A, Zone TS2, two-lot subdivision. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Want to second that?
Second.
Okay. We have a second? All those in favor? Okay.
Check opposed.
Opposed? Okay, so it's two to four, so that carries. Katie? All right.
That would be, what day did you say on that?
The first meeting in September.
Okay. So we'll figure out what's going on with that in due time. Correspondence, do we have correspondence? Correspondence?
Looks like nothing.
Okay. We have other classification of fung reg. We have other classification of fung regulation, 273-194, area location, bulk standards, TS2 zone, the following area, location, bulk standards, plan in TS2 district, Table 3B for definitions. What little gem nugget is this?
Reggie and I will both weigh in on this a little bit. I'll start to talk about it first. This is some, several ambiguities about the zoning code which we want to talk about and see if we want to address. This, you all have this yellow-
The colored man.
-hypothetical site plan. This is just a hypothetical plan for local development in the TS2. Okay? The TS2 zone, the part of it that's at issue is the maximum building size regulation, which the text of which is on your, on your agenda. What it says is the maximum building size in the TS2 zone, no building or other structure shall exceed a total floor area of 30,000 square feet, up to 50,000 square feet by special permit. No single related or integrated retail use shall exceed 25,000 square feet cumulatively. So this particular plan shows a building of, if you can read the numbers, of 19,000 square feet, and then it also shows an area in yellow of outdoor display, fenced outdoor display area of an additional 15,000 square feet. And then in green are several small sidewalk areas where there would be display of merchandise for sale, and then in the purple or violet color is another area of outside display of merchandise for sale. In this case, I believe it's intended to be vehicles that might be for sale, or tractors or things like that that might, that would be displayed outside for sale. The question is, what does it, what does the no single related or integrated retail use, 25,000 square feet, mean with respect to these outside display areas? We have interpreted in the past, specifically in the case of Walmart, that areas that are for outside display of merchandise do count towards the maximum store size. The issue here before us now is, is that a, is that a correct interpretation? Is that a reasonable interpretation? Is there any provision as perhaps might be implied by the first part of this statement under maximum building size for allowing additional use area when it's beyond the 25,000 square feet in this particular case for a special permit to allow an expansion of that use, use area? Those are the questions that are before you.
So hypothetically, let's say there's Sam's used cars, and Sam has a huge outside area where he would display his cars.
Right.
How could that not count towards his sales area if that's where he's selling them?
Well, that's the question. It does count toward the sales area. Is that, does that, is it, is it appropriate, as we've interpreted in the past, that the maximum size for the use is 25,000 square feet in this case? Does that include outside area of display? You're suggesting that it does.
All right, so we, our friends at Walmart just got a two-year permission to have-
They got variances on that specific requirement.
Right, so does that, does that top their allowance? Is that above and beyond what they would?
Yes.
So what you're saying is that they would need a variance for these other areas if it exceeded-
Well, the difference between this and Walmart, clearly, yes, the answer is yes. Walmart, in the case of Walmart, the store, the store itself, the interiors, interior space of store already exceeds the maximum store area for that zone because that, that use was there before we created that in the form of a previous tenant. So Walmart could occupy the space as it was, non-conform, non-conformally in terms of size. They proposed to have outside display area. We said, no, you can't have that. That, that expands the non-conformity. So they secured variances, as you know, several times in order to have outside display areas. In the case of Walmart, they're fairly small. The areas that they have for outside display have been pretty small, so the argument could be that the variance was appropriate there. In the case, in this case, at least it'd be my feeling, that what they're showing is outside display areas. In this particular case, it's what are outside sale or display is significant, is not incidental to the size of the store itself. In fact, it's larger than the store itself.
Right.
So that probably would not be appropriate for a variance, in my opinion.
Right, but it would be at the discretion, our discretion, to grant a variance even though it's-
No, you do not have the authority to grant a variance.
So they could, they could theoretically say, you know what, even though it's another 40,000 feet on top of this 20,000 feet. ZBA could say, you know what, we're going to do that.
They could.
Because we're in a good mood that day and we're going to do that.
Hopefully they wouldn't, their criteria would not be based on what their mood was.
Do they have a criteria?
Yes.
They have to find, they have to find that there's a hardship associated with the site itself, a specific uniqueness to that particular site.
So, so if this person is creating this wonderful place to sell from, they've created their own hardship, haven't they?
Yeah, I don't think this, this particular example, in my opinion, as perhaps as you're suggesting, would not be appropriate for a variance because of the extent of the expansion. The real issue to me, the issue to me is, is there's, is there something implied in the first sentence here that suggests you can go from 30,000 square feet for total building size to 50 by special permit? Is there something implied where you could do the same thing with the 25,000 square feet? Could you, is there a provision, is there a suggestion that under a special permit, you could apply for a larger area of use? And, you know, consider that.
Well, I mean, we have something similar in the SCW zone where the intent of that regulation talks about integrated retail uses and all that stuff is, what we didn't want there is to have a big box.
Right.
And my suspicion is that's a similar situation that we're looking here. So if you did have a 30,000 square foot building, you could only have 25,000 square feet of that used by one tenant.
Correct.
You'd have to have a different tenant in there.
And if you had 50,000, you would have to have at least two tenants who are not single,
related, or integrated.
Right.
Okay, so I think what the intent here is to prevent getting a box bigger than 25,000 square feet with one tenant in it in this particular zone.
Right.
So to me, I think it would be acceptable to use these outside areas because they're not part of that big building. They're allowed, the way it's written, I think that use could be allowed in other parts of the property, but you couldn't have them in one building because these two seem to be interrelated, the only way I can interpret it. Now, the other way, you could take a look at it and say that nowhere on the whole property could you have any retail use that exceeds 25,000 square feet cumulatively. So if you had five clothing stores and they were 30,000 square feet, that wouldn't be acceptable, but I can't believe we would wear something like that. So to me, I think, in my opinion, what it means is you cannot have any use in any of the building or buildings exceed 25,000 square feet. It doesn't make reference to outside storage areas.
How about if they were outside sales areas?
Not storage, these are sales.
I don't think it matters because this relates back to the building size because they're together. It was an attempt to prevent, if you will, a big box or what would be, be a big box in the TS2 zone based on the zoning there.
So they're kind of making it a big box by having a lot of the sales area outside if this were to be okay?
Yeah.
And then the spirit of the law is that that's what it didn't want to have happen.
Well, no, I don't think that's what it is. They didn't want a big box. The fact that you wrote that up at different locations around there, I, I mean essentially that's what we got in the SCW zone. We have several smaller buildings and we don't have one big box there.
So what, but what if it's all one company and all selling the same product or interrelated product?
Well, the thing that, I think in my opinion-
As long as it's in multiple buildings, it should be all that.
But the regulation didn't recognize-
It doesn't say that here. It doesn't allow and limit it to the outside.
Right, I think the ambiguity is that when we wrote this, we didn't think about the possibility that there are certain types of uses, as the chairman implied earlier, that by their, by their nature have significant outside display areas of merchandise. Car dealers, be the most logical one.
Chief Dan.
But also landscaping businesses that have the significant area of outside display, landscape products, you know, whether it's be building material, building supplies would be another type of, of use where you might have a substantial building, but you would also have a large area of outside storage of fencing and wood products and mulch and, you know, stuff like that, which by its nature is going to be displayed outside, not inside. In theory, I mean, car dealers, there are some car dealers, obviously, like in Manhattan where they have the display inside a building, but suburban locations of these, car dealers typically have their merchandise displayed outside. And this regulation doesn't really specifically address that.
I'm not saying that that's not something good or something we want in town, which you're proposing.
Right.
I'm just saying that the way the regulation is written, I don't think it would limit it. If you want it to, then I think you need to change the regulation.
So hypothetically, let me ask a question, then, if it's, and I'm only going off of places I know. So something like a trailer depot where they have a pretty large indoor area where they have some trailers and you can buy all your parts for your plows and things, and then outside, a lot of their trailers are, technically the outside is only a display area, so that would be okay, right?
I mean, the way it's written now, whether you, that's what you want, or that's what you intend, it's a new story. I'm just saying if you don't like my opinion of this, then the wording ought to be changed here to reflect what it is to honor no one.
Right, so, so why don't we, if there is potentially an issue, why don't we just draft a better regulation?
Right. That would be my suggestion to clarify exactly what we mean and say what we mean.
This is a specific individual who contacted you about that.
Oh, yeah. Right now, we're talking about hypothetically, we haven't identified the tenant or the specific use. We haven't identified the site, although if you look at it carefully, you might figure it out. But it is a real, it is a real situation, yes. This is not just totally hypothetical.
It's not hypothetical.
Ray, the way you were describing it, you weren't saying that the outdoor sales area, if, if say this 19,000 square foot building existed, you weren't saying that there could be 6,000 additional square feet of outdoor sales area adding up to 25,000? You were saying that the entire space is all right.
Well, that's, that's what I think this is trying to get to, is that if you had a 30,000 or somewhere 30,000 square foot building, we'll say, just to throw that out, you could not put a tenant in there that is using more than 25,000 square feet of it. The other 5,000 square feet would have to be used by another use which is not an integrated retail or related retail. So if you put a totally different company-
Inside those four walls.
Inside those four walls and five, you know, six, 5,000 square feet, you'd be okay. But what you couldn't do is you couldn't put a single or an integrated, you know, Toys R Us, Babies R Us, something like that in the 30,000.
Maybe a tractor.
Yeah, that's what I think this was getting at. I don't think it anticipated the outdoor use.
So this just deals with building size.
That's, that's my interpretation. Now, I'm not saying that's what we wanted or that's the way it ought to be, but if we want to change that, then I think we should change the regulation to make it clear because...
Well, no matter what the outcome is of any particular applicant, as we find these things, as we trip over them, we probably should do housekeeping and really fix the wording.
Yeah.
To mean what we want.
The other way you could read this is to say that on the whole site, if you don't relate this to the maximum building, that you cannot have a single integrated related retail use of more than 25,000 square feet. So even if you have 50,000 square feet of the building, anywhere on the site, you can't have more than 25,000 square feet of clothing store or, you know, of retail particular use, which I don't think was the meaning.
That wasn't.
No, no, certainly wasn't, but that's one way to read it as well, so.
Right, so it's really ambiguous.
Yeah.
And it's, it's never good to have, you know, open to interpretation. Someone's feelings are going to get hurt. It's easy enough to write it the right way and to just make it happen. So maybe we should do that.
Okay.
And then see what happens.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Is this on the agenda for the zoning subcommittee meeting on Monday?
No, but it could be. It's probably a good idea.
Was this what you were, had, didn't think it was something else?
Right, this came up today, yesterday. Definitely talk about, I think that should be on the zoning committee agenda. I mean, it'd be one of the things.
I'm not sure that the zoning subcommittee is better equipped than the learned commission at this time to review that.
All right. All set?
Yep.
Good. Why don't we, are you ready? You ready to go? If you want to say, please.
Route 1 West Committee.
Route 1 West Committee.
Report.
Report.
I'm Sonya Fabiano, 85 Chris Hill Circle, also chairman of the Route 1 West Study Committee, which is the reason I'm here tonight. Although the committee has been meeting now for about nine months, this is the first time I've addressed planning and zoning commission and come to you with, I think the only way I can do this is to take you right back to the very beginning and take you through the whole process of what we have done and what we haven't done, and what we've achieved and not achieved over that course of time. I got involved originally because I was a member of the Economic Development Commission, and then I run off of that commission and went on to the Table 5 Committee, which, as you know, studied all commercial zoning in the town of Guilford, with the exception of the zoning on the West End. They left that alone and they decided to put that in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to create a committee to study it further. So the committee was formed, and the original purpose, I'm going to go over, there's been a modification of those purposes over time. The original purpose and the original committee, let me start with the committee. The committee consisted, first of all, with six people. A member of planning and zoning, which was to be named later, turned out to be Walter Corvillier. Sarah Williams from the Guilford Land Conservation Trust to represent the environmental community. Matt Joseph, who was a member of EDC. Chris Widmer, who's a local architect. Victor Anatra, who's a property owner in, or in town. And myself, who was a property owner on the West End. So that was the original committee. The thought at that time is that the committee was small and it was balanced. We thought that there was the, we thought that the, that the composition of the committee represented all segments of the community and it could move forward. As we got started, a few decided that there was not enough representation from local residents. As a result, residents started to be added to the committee. Let me just add that after the formation of the original committee and I think after one or two of our meetings, a local real estate broker, who happens to be a commercial broker, contacted me and said he'd like to be on the committee. He's a Guilford resident. And I said, that's beyond my authority, you're going to have to talk to somebody at planning and zoning. When he called planning and zoning, they told him that he could not be added because it would take the committee and knock it out of balance. So, let me go back to the purpose. The original purpose, as it was originally written, was the purpose of this project is to review comprehensively zoning along Route 1 West corridor approximately from Jones Drive to the Bramford line. Particular attention should be paid to expanding commercial zoning opportunities consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Careful consideration of natural resource and environmental constraints is a necessary component of this review. The first step of this committee is to work to review the current zoning map and correct several errors in mapping which have been previously identified. So that was the purpose, as it was handed to me as the chairman of the committee. Just so you know, the reference to consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development was, or is, as it is currently stated, the area contiguous to Boston Post Road in Guilford's West End represents the only remaining major opportunity for further appropriate commercial development. In the final report, economic development potential, this area is recommended for multi-use, multifamily residential commercial development with emphasis on discouraging retail shopping strips. So I took what was given to me, said I would buy into that, I would chair the committee and move forward. I would like to point out that that purpose and mission, the original mission, was further modified by reducing the emphasis on commercial development and reemphasizing the emphasis on the general, the general plan of conservation and development. The original committee, as I mentioned, was balanced. It was, there were many respected, well-qualified people that sat on the committee. It was, there were many respected, well-qualified people that sat on the committee. The early committee's work, in my opinion, was to educate people as to what we were all about. The reference to zoning, I thought, would require that we all understand zoning. So we spent several meetings discussing all of the commercial zones that exist in the town of Guilford, all of the zones. We went from, and on the West End in particular, the MUC ones, the TS two, the CD, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All of the zones that existed, we spent several meetings actually looking at what's contained in those zones, analyzing them, and hopefully understanding what they were, so that we could move forward with a, with a better foundation in terms of the committee understanding what they had to do. In addition to studying zoning as it exists in town right now, commercial zoning, I thought it was important to also cover some other bases, so we invited MJ Kessler, who is the chairman of the Plan of Conservation and Development, to speak to our committee and tell us what they're doing, what they're all about, and what does it really mean when they say what they said in their current plan. Also invited Ed Seibert, who is an affordable housing expert, to explain what affordable housing is, so that people can understand that we weren't just talking about a shopping center, or an office building, or whatever, but we were also trying to incorporate all of the things that could possibly exist on the West End, including affordable housing. The thought was that, there's been a lot of discussion about what happens to a senior when they get to a certain stage in their life, and they want to downsize, they want to sell their home and find something smaller to live in, they really aren't a lot of options. What about your kids that go off to college, come back after they have completed their college, they'd like to move back into town, but not move in with their parents? We really don't have a lot of options for that. So those are the kinds of things that we were talking about. We also invited Alyssa De Jong in, who's an expert on Shiretts. She is the vice president of the Connecticut Economic Resource Center. So again, trying to bring in as much information, as much education, and as much understanding as we could as to what we might do, was the foundation of how, how I perceived to move forward as chairman of the committee. As you know, about the same time that the committee was formed, we got very complicated and very confused with the propane issue that was approved by this commission by special permit on the West End. When I tell you that the number of people that showed up at our meetings to discuss propane and discuss that situation was unbelievable, this room was full, standing room only. We finally got to the point where it was such a problem for the committee, I asked Ray to come in, he was chairman at that time, to speak to the people in the community and say, "Look, the, the committee has nothing to do with the propane issue. That is currently under study by the Wetlands Commission, they're gonna deal with it, and then what happens with, it may or may not go to planning and zoning from there, it has nothing to do with the committee." As much as we tried to emphasize that, and let people know that propane had nothing to do with the work of the committee, could not get rid of it. So we took a three-month hiatus. We stopped meeting for three months. During that three-month period, the Wetlands Commission did deal with it, and they did what they did. Again, it has nothing to do with us. Back in action again, we talked about doing a survey. We spent a couple of meetings talking about, what's a survey? What's a questionnaire? At the end of two meetings, we decided to scrap that idea as well. So we, we had a lot of wasted starts and stops, and, you know, a lot of time that got wasted in there, and while this was all happening, new members were being added. And the new members that were being added, there's a total of five additional members added to the original committee, all of whom are residents of the West End. So I think it's significant that we go back to what I said earlier, and that is that someone who is very qualified in zoning wanted to be on the committee, but was told he could not be on the committee because of his profession, that it would take the committee out of balance. Instead, what we've done is we've added five residential people to the committee. Now, in my opinion, that took this committee and changed it entirely from what the original purpose was. We were no longer in motion to try to meet the commitment that I signed on for. What I signed on for is what I read earlier, it's what I believe, it's what I worked for, it's everything that I did for the last twelve or thirteen meetings that we had, and it has become an untenable situation. It has gotten to the point where there has been very, very serious comments exchanged between the committee and people in the audience and residents, and it's gotten to the point where it's not beneficial to the committee, it's not beneficial to the work that we do, it certainly is not representative of the town of Guilford. I've lived in this town for thirty-seven years, I love this town, I do as much as I can for this town. What I have found, as a result of what went on here, and what has developed over time, is that, let me just say that I have served on a number of boards and commissions and committees and task force over the years, but none of them were like this one, for the simple reason that, let me give you an example. I'm on the Ethics Commission. The Ethics, the Ethics Commission strove to create a new code of ethics. The five people on the commission all worked for the goal of creating a new code of ethics. It was never a question of whether there was going to be one or not be one. It was never a question of whether we were gonna have a code or not have a code. The question really had to do with the debate of what the language would be and what was gonna be covered. Another committee that I was on was the Green Use Committee, the rules that govern the use of the green. There was never a question that people could not use the green. The question was, how would they use the green? And what would the regulations be that control the use of the green? So the whole committee was working for a common purpose. Another example I can give you is I served on the Blight Ordinance Committee. This town had no Blight Ordinance until I served on it with three other people. There was never a question that we weren't going to have a Blight Ordinance. The question was, what would the ordinance be? And we worked towards, as, as professionals, to try to come up with something that worked and worked well, and it got done. The difference between all of those committees and others that I've served on is that this committee, the question is not whether, whether we're going to move forward with commercial development that's, that's consistent with the characteristics of the town of Guilford, the question here is whether we're going to do it or not do it. And the not doing is taking over the doing it. So, as you can see, I, if I'm not, if I haven't said it or not showing it, obviously, there's a little frustration from me. I've had two people on the committee that have indicated to me that they will no longer attend committee meetings because of the demeanor of the meeting that we had last night, which was very unfair to some of the people on the commission, on our committee, and the exchange of, of communication, actually, it's sickening when I think back on it. But that being the case, my suggestion to you, Mr. Chairman, and you were part of the discussion last night, the discussion led in the direction of a new mission with a new direction, and if that's what you want to do, I think it's a great idea. My recommendation is that you dissolve this committee and form a new committee. Now, many of the committee members are in the room tonight, they can disagree, or comment on it, or whatever, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you have. Walter.
Well, okay. Walter's on the committee, by the way.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to address that since obviously...
Please, please feel free.
I think maybe this tone is part of the reason why I haven't succeeded up to this point. I would like to ask you, are the, are you currently the leasing agent for any of the properties that were being reviewed?
No.
By the Route One West Committee?
No.
Have you been the leasing agent for any of the properties that were being reviewed by the Route One West Committee? Have you been the leasing agent in the past four months?
No.
Your name is not on any of the properties on Route One West as the leasing agent?
You talking about my own property?
No, I'm talking about properties that are currently up for the...
I own a seven-unit building on Route One. I currently have six tenants, and I'm looking for a seventh.
And that's the only, that's the only one that are involved.
That's the only one that are involved, yeah. By the way, you, I think what you're alluding to...
Actually, I have a couple more questions for you.
Sure.
Thank you. I talked, you talked for about twelve minutes, I just wanted to ask a few more questions before we move on. How many of the properties on Route One West have you ever represented as a real estate agent?
Several.
Can you give us any examples?
Currently, I have a commercial condo for sale on Route One West. It's not in the study area, because it's already zoned commercial, it's in TS two zone, that's current. I have leased out a number of times. I've sold other condos, that's in the Cedar Press condo complex, I was done on their business in that building. I have sold property to, actually, Mr. Anatra, where he built a beautiful Gateway West. Some of you may remember what that was originally, was a rundown building on nine acres, I think it was, and that's fifteen years ago.
Were there any other?
I represented the Rachio family on the most important piece of property on the West End of town. I've represented them on and off for twenty years.
And that property is currently zoned residential?
Not only residential, the majority of it is R eight, which, as you know, is four-acre minimum residential, which is the most ridiculous thing that you can possibly have on Route One we have.
And you expressed that you thought it was appropriate to rezone that property to TS two on the Route One West.
TS two would be a good, a good option, but there are others as well.
Are there any other residential properties that you've represented along that study area that you can think of?
Uh, no, not offhand, no.
Thank you. I guess, Mr. Chairman, I just...
Let me get back to your first question, so I can answer it.
Which one?
The first question you asked was, do I currently represent anybody? I think you were referring to the fact that two meetings ago, I said there was a possibility that the Rachio property might come back on the market, and they might be using me as their real estate broker. And if they did that, I would have to find a way to move from chairmanship off that position to a member of the committee, or maybe even off the committee. But I made that very clear, that I was working in that direction, that that has not materialized, and it may not, so.
As a member of the Ethics Commission, you think it would be more appropriate for you to serve on the committee than as the chairman?
I do, and I tell you for this reason, because if I, if I got off the committee, I think I would be doing them, my clients, a disservice. I think it would be ethically, because of what I would have to do if I stayed on the committee, I'd have to recuse myself of all discussion. And if I did that, that wouldn't really be fair to them, because I think there should be a committee that advocates for what I think is gonna be good for them at the end of the day. And so it's a conflict of interest, not just with the committee, but also with my client, if I had them.
So what was the interest in creating a vice chairman?
What was the what?
You expressed interest in creating a vice chairman at that time.
For that reason, that I would just move aside and turn everything over to somebody else.
And how would a vice chairman help you to do that? I'm sorry, I'm not quite finished, Ray. Let me just...
Well, I think exactly.
Ray, can I continue before Ray continues? Because I think that, Ray, Ray, I understand that you don't want this to continue, but I just wanna, I just wanna ask you.
We get to the point.
We've got a vice chairman.
I'm not gonna waste my time.
A vice chairmanship, I don't understand exactly how a vice chairmanship would...
I think I call it a co-chair.
Or a co-chairman.
Yeah.
Would help more than, say, a resident.
Well, let me use the example, if, for whatever reason, Rich had to recuse himself, who takes over the reins? Who, who's the leadership once he steps aside? And is there a need for someone to take that leadership role? I felt that if I had to step aside, to be ethically correct, and to be honest with everybody, somebody should be there to take over. My own position right now is, it's a moot point, because I'm not gonna be chairman.
Have you resigned, Mr. Chairman?
I am not resigned, but it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen because I believe the committee should be dissolved, and I think that it's the best thing that you can do. And Rich, again, you heard the discussion last night, you were a very active part of it, you know that people are moving in a different direction, they wanna have a vision of why they live here? Fine, if that's what it has to be, that is a hundred and eighty degrees opposite of what the original purpose for my committee is for. So, but I think that's a good idea, and I think if you want to do that, you should form another committee, but if you do that, it would be working in opposition to this one, you should dissolve this one.
Okay. Tonya, did you refer anyone as an idiot last night at that committee meeting?
Anybody what?
Did you refer to anyone as an idiot last night?
Let's not make this thing personal, Mr. Chairman.
As a matter of fact, I did not.
Okay, okay, thank you.
As a matter of fact, I did not.
That's good, thank you, thank you. Anything else you wanna say?
All set, do you have anything for me?
No, I, I, I think you're right, I agree with you, that it is dysfunctional, it's not working, and we do need to reform it in a way that it's going to work. You know, fundamentally, I think what's going on is that in the past, there may have been a significant emphasis on strictly looking at commercial development in that area, and at the cost of recognizing other responsibilities we may have. And I, I really want to recognize responsibilities that we have, business development plus everything else. And so we will reconstitute this committee, we will reform it, and we will take it in a different direction. So, so that's on the horizon, that's gonna happen. But I appreciate everything that you did.
Thank you.
And I know you put your heart into it, and like everything else, everybody does here, I, I wanna thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful gift to the town. Do you gentlemen wanna?
No.
Okay, good, we're all set. Where are we? We have some appointments, don't we?
Before you, is that, we started to talk, actually, it's not on the agenda, but Walter mentioned the fact that there's a committee zoning meeting.
Okay.
On Monday.
Yep.
The twenty-first. And we can, we can, I think, talk about this issue, TS two issue. We also have one property owner, applicant, that has a interpretation question that they want to bring up with the zoning committee.
Okay.
I just wanna find out who's going to be there at the meeting?
That's a good question.
I mean, are we gonna have a committee meeting? I guess we won't have, but nobody can come, so I wanted, I wanted...
Is Walter the zoning committee right now?
Good question. That's sort of...
I believe that I'm the only remaining member of the zoning committee. I believe Mark White from the Route One West Study Committee has expressed interest in joining the zoning subcommittee, as I briefly mentioned to you a little while ago.
Okay.
And he's, he's very intelligent, and I think he would make a, a good addition, although then he'd still just be a, a two-member...
Right, but it was a two-member subcommittee in the past, and it was functioning.
I, I guess, yes.
Right, so it would be a functional committee.
Mr. Chairman, we've always had commission members on the zoning committee.
Well, we're running, I don't know any commission members that have the time right now. Do we have commission members?
I mean, I could, I could participate.
I can participate. I mean, the only reason I used to participate on planning and on zoning was that I was chair of planning zoning, and that's, that's official member of your own committee. But I was not a member of either one. If I'm appointed to any of the committees, I certainly would serve.
You're appointed.
Okay, I'm on zoning.
And you're appointed. So there we go.
What time, Monday?
Can you make the meeting on Monday, the twenty-first?
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Usual place, it kind of centers up.
Wonderful.
No, it's actually here.
Where is it?
Fockers.
Fockers?
Okay, good, so we will have a meeting, that's good.
Perfect, so that's excellent, nice work.
Is there, is there a restriction against appointing people that are not specifically on planning and zoning to the zoning subcommittee?
Other than tradition, is there any reason why we can't do that?
Well, let's check bylaws.
Do we have bylaws?
Yes, we do.
And please, what are, what do they say?
Let's go, why, why don't you keep going, and I will look up what the...
I think it just says that it gets created.
All right.
It says planning committee, county zoning committee.
It could, it could well be just, it could well just say that.
Okay, well, we have a, well, while Ray is doing us a favor in looking that up, we have a couple more appointments which are gonna happen right now. We have Aaron Manning, who Steve Cops really wanted to have on the planning committee, and he's not here right now, but I wanna appoint Aaron Manning at his recommendation, feels that they'd be a good, good addition. We also have, this is very exciting, what a great opportunity for a design review, we have Walter Weisenborn, who really has a great set of credentials, and Walter will be joining the design review committee immediately, so that's excellent. Very happy to announce that. Frank, what do you know about our food truck situation? Anything good?
We had another meeting with myself, Brian McGlong, Chief of Police, Thomas Terrible, and our First Selectman, Joe Mazza, and I believe our Health Inspector, Dennis Johnson. And we just, we realized that we're getting, Brian and myself are gonna work on some ordinance, we already have some ordinances in place, we're gonna work on some best practices, and we, we realize that it's not gonna be that big of a problem, so we're just gonna fine-tune what we have, and, you know, maybe in a month or so, I'll come back with another report, and we'll be fine.
That's great, and thank you for taking care of that, it's good that you stepped up, appreciate it. What do you know, Ray?
Okay, Article 12 Committee, Section 3, says, "These standing committees," which zoning committee, planning are one, "shall consist of both regular and alternate members of the commission as well as non-members, and shall normally be appointed for one year. Vacancies shall be filled by the commission chairperson."
Well, okay, so there you go.
So it cannot, it can't be non-members.
Wait, the commission chairperson?
Is the individual who appoints them.
So that would be me. Why did the second part say it's alternate and regular members and...
And non-members of the commission, so it can't be members of the following.
And alternate members.
And alternate members.
So this person is eligible?
That's right, pretty much anybody's eligible in town.
That's great, you have to be willing to say yes. So is this someone that you're comfortable and you want to have with you as a teammate?
He's been reasonably effective, I think that, I think that he and other members of the Route 1 West Study Committee will be more effective going forward, but I think that he is very effective.
So then...
His name is Mark White.
Mark White, so let's, I would like to...
He's a resident.
And he's a resident. Oh, he does have to be a resident in Connecticut? A resident of Guilford?
It doesn't say that, but it implies that they have to be a resident of...
It would be weird.
Well, is this one of those things where the wording is kind of funky again?
It's funky, it doesn't say they have to be a property owner or a member, but it implies that it's a citizen of the town, but that's all...
It implies, but again, we tripped up on the words like we were earlier. Is the wording in such a way that we could appoint someone who's not a member of the community, is not a resident of Guilford?
Yeah, and we have done that on times for different commissions.
Really?
Where they had expertise, yeah.
So just to restate that, I could technically appoint someone to zoning or planning who is not a resident of Guilford. Is that correct?
Where they had an interest, I mean, I don't think we've just picked anybody out of the hat, but there have been consultants that have been hired and paid who have been residents, and then in addition, there have been people who own property here but didn't have the residence here that we had on it, so...
Okay, so hypothetically, let's say there's an individual who was a resident of Guilford, moved to Madison, is a member of the Guilford Preservation Alliance, and wants to, really wants to be a part of things. Where does that fall out?
We, I would check with Town Council on the Town Charter first, there may be some language in the Town Charter, just as just our bylaws.
Yep.
But, you know, in the Town Charter, it says we could be on commissions and what their qualifications are. I don't know the answer to that, I have to look at the Charter.
Okay, not you, someone else. So that brings us to this really distasteful part of this agenda, which I really struggle with. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Move to pay the bills for $100.46.
Second.
All right, and it pains me to do this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to approve the minutes from the July 2nd, 2000, oh, did I jump the gun? I'm sorry, please, Mr. Chairman.
Approval of minutes, sir.
Move to approve the minutes from the July 2nd, 2014 meeting.
Okay, all of you had an opportunity to read the...
I was in here, so I'll abstain.
Okay.
Any discussion or vote?
I looked at them, and boy, they were great.
I seconded. Thank you, Frank.
Okay, so all those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Victor?
One.
Before we close out, yes?
Yeah, I have a question. You just appointed another member to the designer review debate?
Yep.
That makes 11 members now.
Well, I got something in the thing today that showed there were nine regular members. I don't know if one fell off the table.
According to the regulations, isn't it five to seven members?
No, it's 10, with three alternates.
With three alternates.
According to the town law, I looked it up with one of the folks in town.
According to the town website, you have 10 members and you have three vacancies on alternates, that would be 13 members, so we're...
Well, the wording of the law that I read myself is that there are 10 regular members and three alternates. That's the actual words.
The regulation that Reggie Green brought out last meeting, if you read that regulation, it says five to seven members.
Tell you what, I'll do, I'll review that tomorrow.
No, that's for the, our planning and zoning commission, not our website.
Right, I'll review that tomorrow to make sure that we're within...
Was it Frank, someone you're going to review?
Yeah, I was, I expressed it before that I was...
Oh, that's, that's right, in our zoning code.
Right.
We say...
73, you know, something?
Yes.
You've got more members there than the regulation allows.
So seven regulars and three alternates?
Yes.
Just to what side is it?
Five to seven, several people have dropped and they're still on the website.
Right, I don't think the website's necessarily accurate. Did you say it was Reggie 273?
Yeah, we read it, yeah, last meeting, briefly, there's a whole section on it. And I, yeah, I was appointed to kind of run with it.
And you think it's five to seven regular and three alternate?
I believe that's what it said there, but also it says that there should be a variety, not just strictly architects, and that's currently, that's all there is, is architects, and it says there should be, the merit of it.
Architects, engineers.
Engineers, people with that type of...
And all the terms were required before automatic, you're able to serve until the term ends.
I have not done that.
Is there a reason why you're not doing it?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to do it right now, and the way that the wording of the document is, is that they serve until they are replaced, so...
Why would they have a term?
I don't know, what do you think?
Oh, they have a term, and whereas their term expires. They have worse than our commission, so they stay five...
Even this commission, even this commission, we had, in the last couple of months, we had a commissioner who was well past his term, and he stayed on until a replacement could be appointed, that is our standard town policy.
All 10 members, it's probably only got one member that hasn't expired his term, so it's the same procedure, you have nine members that have an expired term, only have one member that's current, and that's standard procedure. If it was the other way around, I could understand that. And then you've got more members than the regulations...
It says five, no...
Well, let's, it's 273, 134 is the membership, it's, it's members, they're appointed by the chair, its members shall serve staggered two-year terms and may be reappointed for additional two years, so that means they can only serve four, I guess. The chairman shall serve a one-year term and may be reappointed for additional one-year terms, so the chair can only serve two years. The committee shall have a minimum of five members and not more than 10 members, plus three alternates. And then it goes through, now this is one, that's interesting, it said members must be residents of the town of Guilford, so if this is the case, they have to be members...
So it's 10 and 3?
So, well, it can be up to 13 members.
I don't think that we have 10.
I don't have a list in front of me, but I don't know what list is on the town website, but I don't think there are, I don't think there are even...
Right, and...
Eight, there might be eight members right now, if I'm preconstraining correctly, but...
Right, and this individual has just credentialed so well that it's a tremendous, tremendous, wonderful opportunity for the town, and I'm really...
He's also an architect, though, right?
Absolutely, it's great.